Ben, and for right now, we don't have a mayor. We're gonna swear one in in one second. Mark? Chris?
I have the five.
Just one second before we do that. I have to bid farewell to the person that's handing the gavel over. Our illustrious mayor that's sitting in the front seat, who will now, in about 30 seconds, be the former mayor, was unable to make it to an event recently. And as public information officer for the fire department, they asked me to please make sure that this is appropriately presented in public. For 22 years of service, 1991 to 2013, in recognition and sincere appreciation for your support and dedicated service on behalf of the citizens of Chestertown and Chestertown Volunteer Fire Company, we thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, you ready?
That's the kind of thing you'll get when you go out for 23 years. Folks, a lot of times people ask me, "Of course, the Circuit Court, what authorizes me to swear people in?" And say, "Oh, yeah, Andy Kev does that." And I normally get a certified copy of election results from the election board of the town, and I will leave that soon. But I know that the mayor got elected, but I don't have these certified election results at this moment.
Mark?
Mr. Serrano will take care of getting that for me. And you saw what you did. You put your...
Whatever it is you need, Mark.
And then they're in the public record, so if you ever want to see them, for any town election throughout the county, or the county election, or the state election, the election results have to be certified and filed at the clerk of circuit court office, which is the keeper of the record. And then you can get copies if you need to look at something, or you want to see all the different write-ins, things like that. Sometimes you get a good laugh out of it, right, Bill?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Serrano? Mr. Serrano?
Yeah, you.
All right. I got it.
You got it in your head?
I got it right here.
Yes.
And...
Bible's on code.
Bible's right here. Yes. Now, that's another tradition that you should be aware of, that the state clerk of court used to be allowed to carry a Bible, and I have the historic Bible in the courthouse. But because of separation of church and state laws that have evolved over the last 50 years, we are no longer allowed to use the Bible or carry the Bible. The individuals can choose to use one and supply one. The clerks just are not allowed to do that in the nation anymore. It's just a lot of changes, so I try to keep the public informed. Michelle? Chris, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, in your name where I insert mine. I, Mark Pumphord.
I, Chris Serrano.
Do swear or affirm...
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful...
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance...
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment...
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully...
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice...
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of mayor of Chestertown, Maryland...
Execute the office of the mayor of Chestertown, Maryland.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Right about your word, Mayor. Right about your head. And please. And then, of course, this is the public test book, which has 300 years' worth in the courthouse. You're welcome to see it anytime. Every public official that gets sworn has to enter the public test book. And this goes right back to the last law. I'm just the odd law clerk that comes out and does the... Because we're a small enough community that I can do it. Most state courts, it's impossible to do because of the size of the jurisdiction, but we're blessed to live in God's country here in Chestertown, so I can still do that. Thank you. Chris, good luck.
Okay, thank you. So, as you all know, in addition to a mayoral election, we also have two council seats up for election. And so, we will now be swearing in our two new members of the Chestertown Town Council. So why don't we begin with Liz Chris? In word of one.
Is someone here with you, Liz?
Yes, well, I would like either my husband or my son to come up. Or both.
You swear. Okay, make sure you're close together. Whatever you need. Thank you.
And if I'd known we were gonna use a Bible, I would've brought my grandmother's. She was one of the first women ever elected to a city council in Maryland, the city of Miami, in 1925.
A little closer. Just a little closer. You had your shot. I'm gonna read this in smaller chunks than Mark.
My memory's not...
He was pushing me. I, Elizabeth Chris.
I, Elizabeth Chris.
Do swear that I will support...
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful...
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance...
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution...
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will support and comply...
And that I will support and comply.
With the charters, laws, and ordinances...
With the charters, laws, and ordinances.
Of the town of Chestertown.
Of Chestertown.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment...
The best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully...
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice...
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of first ward councilperson...
Execute the office of first ward councilperson.
According to the Constitution...
According to the Constitution.
And the laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
Congratulations.
The oath for President of the United States is probably one-third that's...
Should I sign this?
We will sign this whenever...
If he goes. Oh, sorry.
Sam? Who's gonna... Sam, who's gonna... Mother and father. Raise your right hand. There you go. Are you sure? I, Samuel T. Shogun.
I, Samuel T. Shogun.
Do swear that I will support...
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful...
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance...
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution...
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will support and comply with the charter...
And that I will support and comply with the charter.
Laws and ordinances...
Laws and ordinances.
Of the town of Chestertown.
Of the town of Chestertown.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment...
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully...
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice...
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of third ward councilperson...
Execute the office of third ward councilperson.
According to the Constitution...
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Thank you. You guys wanna sign this while we have them all on? We'll keep swearing them in. We'll get Mark's signature. Whatever he asks for.
Official reference of the elections. He's gotta sign these too.
Did you sign... Did you sign?
I signed mine.
Okay.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
See if you say the same thing next year.
So, I will now officially call the meeting to order. It is 7:37 PM Eastern Standard Time. Our first order of business, which is something that the town does on an annual basis, is to read the State of the Town address. So generally, what this is, is a kind of a summation of what took place in town in the last calendar year, ending December 31st, 2013. And then, we will also have goals for this calendar year, starting January 1st, 2014, and running through this December. So, this is kind of an unusual one, because we thought it would be a nice send-off for the mayor of 22 years of Chestertown, because she was the acting mayor last year, and I've been mayor for about three minutes, to actually read for us everything that happened in her last year of office, her 22nd as the mayor of Chestertown. So, I introduce...
Thank you, Mayor. Council. Bill, Jen, everybody out here, thank you. I hope my voice bolds out. The Charter of the Town of Chestertown states, "The mayor, during the first quarter of each calendar year, shall report to the council the condition of municipal affairs and make such recommendations as he or she deems proper to the public good and welfare of the town and the town. Herein is said report. Financial. The audit for the Town of Chestertown FY 2013 was presented and accepted in November 2013. For the 19th year in a row, the town received an unqualified audit indicating financial excellence. This year's audit was completed by Lindsay Associates LLC of Towson. They are new, having won the audit services in the April bid opening. The annual audit shows the town to be extremely strong financial condition, with a total net assets over liabilities in all departments of over $18 million. This represents $1,615,000 of last year's net assets. Do mainly to the inclusions of the country, not poverty farms, infrastructure, and fixed assets. The town maintains a general surplus of over $1 million, but provides the needed financial security for the town, when funds historically provided by the state of Maryland and county government have been dramatically reduced or have disappeared altogether. During this year, the town held a tax rate of $0.37 for yet another year. The town retained the reduction in the home step property, tax credit percentage of 5%. This credit actually limits the increase of a homeowner's property, properties taxable to 5% in any given year, no matter how much the assessments has increased. Staffing. The town has 40 permanent residents...
Position.
40 permanent positions for full-time employees in different departments. They are Office 6, Street 11, Utilities 8, Police 15. There are also four part-time employees, one in the police department, and three individual sales. Personnel and human resources. A classification and comprehensive study was adopted on January 22nd, 2013. The study was completed by Hendricks and Associates, a firm with experience and familiarity with Maryland towns and cities. This study was put to use in FY 2014 budget process, and can be used for hiring and advancements. It is designed, updated, and amended periodically in the contract. This helps us when we're doing budgets, employee salaries, that we know that we are on target, and we are the place we should be, and not lagging behind possibly other places. Activities and achievements for 2013. The recession of the past two years continued to moderate in 2013. State funds that reached record lows in the past made comebacks in the past two years. How we use our funds were increased, and local income taxes continue to recover. Real estate assessments have stabilized or increased slightly. Meanwhile, the town has maintained excellent and stable financial condition... Position. While aggressively pursuing capital grants whenever possible for parks, infrastructure enhancements, new properties, other major capital projects. One such green opportunity presented itself in 2013, with the Maryland BikeWay funding for Phase 3 of the Chestertown Trail Project. The phase has been designed, the plan's ready to go, as soon as the BikeWay program releases the funds. The release is expected early 2014, and we... And work should be able to start quite soon after that. The town making sure that all permits required from state... And Army Corps of Engineers to start have been acquired. In March, the council renamed the rail trail, the Gillespie Community Trail.
Gilchrist.
Gilchrist.
We like...
It goes by Gillespie. It goes right by Gillespie.
Right by their place.
Right by.
They're good people, too. They're just...
They are.
They're not quite...
More concrete. That's a more concrete name.
Isn't that funny? God, their brain's a strange thing. Except, except example in Maryland Road Park, which has been greatly enhanced using a $144,000 grant from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources Community Parks and Playgrounds Program. The grant funded the grading and seating of the park, a parking lot, a 1-kilometer walking trail, and a spacious dog park. An opportunity for tree planting available itself in the fall with the Middlechester Trust Fund Grant of $32,000, which paid for the planting of 180 trees around the rim of the walking trail on Dog Park. On October 21st, 2013, the town formally named the park the Morisco Bailey Community Park, honoring the mayor for the past 20 years. The town sought and received another community parks and playground grant from of $155,000 for the Gateway Park Project, the intersection of Flatland Road and High Street. The former truck storage area is really a diamond in the rough, and once it's been cleaned up, its natural beauty will begin to shine through. There's a stream running in on one side of the tour trees, and wetlands surrounding the park. Activities in the grant include grading pathways, landscaping, parking, a basketball court in a street appreciation observation platform, and park benches. The park will connect with Phase 3 of the Gilchrist Community Trail, and if funds and permits allow, a footbridge will cross the stream from east to west. In December, the council honored 32-year council member Michael Mumpert by naming it the Michael Mumpert Community Park. A here community parks and playground program grant of $174,000 was sought by the town in August with an application request for the Washington Park Recreation Area. The plan for the park was initiated by the Recreation Commission, and the project will improve grading, excavation, landscaping, pathways, and parking, a play area, pavilion, park furniture, a community basketball court, lighting, and engineering. As part of the effort to address the Chesapeake Bay MTDL, a big wise effort to decrease stormwater runoff and improve water quality, the town is using Middlechester River Trust Fund Grants to construct a stormwater step pool conveyance in the valley between Lamont and Washington College Properties near the intersection of Oregon Road and Washington Avenue. The half a million dollar project, which consists of three stone ponds and landscaping, will treat runoff from the northeast side of Washington Avenue, which converges at the site engraved into the Radcliffe Creek. The project has been designed and permitted, and will be completed by the summer of 2014. The town received one of only two NEA R-Town grants in the state, consisting of $25,000 matched by $25,000 from the town for public arts master plan for the Chesapeake River Waterfront at the foot of High and High to Radcliffe Creek. A consultant will be hired to facilitate three public charades, with the goals of improving connectivity and integrating public art along the waterfront. The project will culminate with a public art installation by a nationally-known artist. Both Washington College and Heron Point approached the town this year with requests that the town be the conduit for a large refinancing and capital improvement bond issue. The council agreed to both requests, since the overall health of these two important institutions is critical to our community, and because the issuance of these bonds has no impact on the financial status of the town of Chestertown. Washington College also partnered with the town on the creation of the Chestertown Waterfront Task Force. Public-private task force was set up with four individuals selected by Washington College and four selected by the town council. Their mission was to study Chestertown from the foot of High Street to Radcliffe Creek and along the rail to trail network. They were to solicit input from the community and to gauge the feasibility of securing state and federal grants and philanthropic gifts to realize any options they might propose. The period of time for study was to within approximately six months. However, the task force soon realized that their mission would require much more time. Their final presentation awaits the completion of drawings of the concept by Urosynkros. However, the town commends individuals involved for their tireless efforts and comprehensive approach. The new Recreation Commission wasted no time in providing fun things for people of all ages to do in town. Especially successful with Bachi Lee, Wilmer Park, and the series of outdoor movies shown around the community. Congratulations to the Recreation Commission and Billy Garwood. Thank you, Billy. This year, the town always began the digitation...
Digitization. Digitization. Digitize. Sorry. Take that out.
They're making digital records.
Digital records. Digitization.
The digit.
It's harder. It's easier to write.
Second minutes of the town council, planning commission, and the historic district commission. Ordinance election records and all the applications have been preserved and are now accessible on the cloud. The state highway administration began all utilities construction works related to the 2291 roundabout. With this completed, the next step will begin in 2014 with the construction of the roadway. Also in 2013, the state highway administration responded to the town's concerns about pedestrian cycle... Cycle of safety on Flatland Road. This is something I know that the mayor and Sam Shogun are interested in pursuing further. I don't think everybody felt that their response to us was quite adequate. Solar power was explored by the town in 2013 with the advertising of RFP for a new 1.2 photovoltaic array that shut down wastewater treatment plant. 11 bids were received, the process called for a selection of finalists to move toward a contract negotiation. The lowest bid was for $2,409,000, with the highest of $3,464,000, and most bidders have asked to remain in consideration for selection. This is a fast-changing industry, and final selection will have to take into consideration the cost of borrowing, the cost of solar photovoltaic panels, the availability, SREC credits, the cooperation of the utility, and the latest decision of the Maryland Public Service Commission. The complexity of the rules of meter aggregation and metering in itself often confuses consumers on the issue of energy cost. A police station study committee was appointed by council to study the possibility of surrounding creation of a new police station in Chestertown. They held their first meeting in December and planned six more meetings. Because the town elections are not in the presidential gubernatorial years, which could place town cabinets on the ballot to prepare for federal, state, and county elections, the town has held its own elections. For that task, the Town Chestertown Board of Election Supervisors, and also enlisted the town...
You could give this...
As a Town, as a Chestertown Board of Election Supervisor, they also enlist the assistants of the Kent County Board of Supervisors for Elections and the State Elections Office. This is a complex operation involving advertising, candidacy, filing deadlines, voting machines, and election workers. Jen Moll has been coordinating the election experience and efficiency, and our thanks go to the town and county boards for their invaluable work, especially to Jen. Thank you, Jen. During the election season, we provided extensive public coverage through our local access channel and having our videographer, James Egan, film the local debates. James put them on cable TV, and also found a new way for the town to display them on YouTube for internet viewing. James continues to do a great job of getting our meetings on air. We also utilize constant contact, Facebook, and websites at chestertown.com to complete our electronic mission to inform the public. The Town Herbicide Recycling Program continues to expand and earn revenues participating. Recycling of organic and non-organic bulk materials are also continuing at a high level, with the town pursuing every avenue practically available for reuse or salvage. The council took major steps this year with two affordable housing projects, Satterfield Court and High Stiffs. Both projects are in Cannon Street, and both are between 20 and 30 years old. They need to be rehabilitated and continue their function as affordable family and senior housing. The town is committed to a partnership with Delaware Valley Development Corporation. That's the company that we did Calvert Heights. And remember, Partner Housing and Community Development, which will achieve the goals above, provide a closing payment to the town of $75,000 at closing, and annual payments in lieu of taxes of $10,000 to the town. In return, DBC DC will restore the project and the Maryland Rental Partnership Program with DHCD and manage the projects at affordable housing. I think we were very glad to have them do it, because it was a big job, and they are more equipped than we are to handle this kind of project. In February 2013, the town purchased the Army from the state of Maryland Military Department for $247,000. This was the remaining federal debt that the Maryland National Guard had on sight. Two months later, Washington College purchased the property from the town as planned, reimbursing the town's all... And all the costs of settlements and earlier costs in environmental Phase 2 studies. The college also donated $200,000 to the town under the terms of the previous memorandum understanding concerning the future of the Army. The visitor center was open 360 days last year, and had over 15,000 visitors. It was the most active month, with 1,900 visitors qualified, 1,977 in June and August. The numbers may reflect the Tea Party and Memorial Day events. Other big events in Chestertown include Down Reading Weekend, the Fourth of July fireworks on the Chester River, the National Music Festival, Music in the Park, Jazz Festival, Taste of the Town, Santa's Arrival, and the very popular First Fridays in downtown Chestertown. The downtown Chestertown Association's curb appeal program continues to amplify its mountain of energy on the street with their ideas and projects. This year, they had students from all the local elementary school brighten up the wooden benches in the fountain park with their painted themes. Planners put light into the sidewalks, posts of meters, and streetlights were painted black, and decorative bicycle lock circles were found from the meter post. At the end of the year, they came with exciting trombolia project with the highs from High Street to Cannon Street alley, which is currently underway. Our really deep thanks go to Nancy McGuire and Nancy Butler, because that has been extraordinary project, and they don't stop. The planning commission spent many months working on the updated comprehensive plan. They completed their draft document, which would begin the public review process in early 2014. The commission should be applauded finishing this document so soon after completing the new zoning ordinance. The Wi-Fi program for the downtown public park was expanded in broad net width to allow more than just a passive use of park seats. When it was discovered that it was being used for credit card transactions for farmer market and artisan market, it became necessary to upgrade it, which is great. It was done as quickly as possible by Kerry Callahan. The farmers' market, artisans' market, and fountain park continues to fill the park with special viability on Saturday mornings. Our thanks to both managers for a great year. I would like to take this opportunity to express my heartfelt thanks to all present and past volunteers who have made it possible for me to succeed as mayor of the town and operate in advance the way it has. Volunteers not only give their time and expertise to the town, they also face hard decisions they may not be so popular with their friends and neighbors. Therefore, a bit of courage and integrity is involved, and I thank the volunteers for these attributes as well. I'm gonna give you one quick story that many of you have heard over and over and over, but I've never forgotten. A few years after I was elected, I was contacted by the Brookings Institute in Washington. This is at the time when the communist block countries were beginning... I didn't know how to govern myself, and they didn't know how to do it. And they had a lot of people coming here. They were crap picked on, shop owners, and bankers, and lawyers, and teachers, and, you know, stay-at-home people to try to figure out how to do this. And they brought them to the Town of Chestertown. In many ways, it was great. In many ways, it was kind of unfair. Can you imagine coming to Chestertown thinking, "This is an American town. Look at this gorgeous place"? And their jaws were dropping. They were going, "Oh, my God". And David McCall, he was a tourist, his fabulous house. This is the way Americans live. But when I was explaining what a volunteer was, they had translators, and you could see this blank look on their faces. And they didn't understand, they didn't have a word for it. When I explained what a volunteer was, this woman started speaking rapidly, and looked at what he had said. And I asked the translator, "What did he say"? She said, "He said those filthy impressions. They said we could take over the United States any time. They could never do it with those volunteers." coming here that were crap picked on, shop owners, and bankers, and lawyers, and teachers, and, you know, stay-at-home people to try to figure out how to do this. And they brought them to the town of Chestertown. In many ways, it was great, in many ways, it was kind of unfair. Can you imagine coming to Chestertown thinking, this is an American town, look at this gorgeous place, and their jaws were dropping? Oh, my God, and David McCall gives a tour of his fabulous house. This is the way Americans live. But when I was explaining what a volunteer was, they had translators, and you could see this blank look on their faces. And they didn't understand, they didn't have a word for it. When I explained what a volunteer was, this woman started speaking rapidly, and I looked at what he had to say. And I asked the translator, what did he say? She said, he said those filthy impressions. They said we could take over the United States anytime. They could never do it with those volunteers. And so I thank you all, and thank you all. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So what I will do now is read some of the goals that we have as a community for the next year, 2014. First, keep taxes at the same rate and maintain our chartered service responsibilities. Improve our recreation programs, expand activities for all ages in Chestertown, and involve the input of our youth in our decision-making process. You hear that, Billy?
I hear you.
Aggressively pursue funding and completion of the Maryland DNR Waterway Improvement Fund for dredging and facility improvement grants for the town-owned Chestertown Marina. Work with businesses, industries, and institutions to determine and address their concerns and needs to improve our local economy. Improve cycling and pedestrian connectivity in the community and work towards the completion of the Guildcrest Trail System and the waterfront walkway plan. Encourage and expand recycling and all other greening efforts, increase public awareness of the needs and advantages of these efforts, and continue to plant trees towards achieving the town's goal of having a 40% coverage of tree canopy in Chestertown. Pursue grants for the preparation of a climate change adaptation plan as recommended by the Maryland Department of Planning. Resolve the issue of the Quakerneck sewer line agreement with the Kent County Commissioners. Begin the public review process of the revised and updated comprehensive plan. I can tell you all that the plan was recently, the draft was completed and submitted to the state for their comments. The planning commission is hoping to have a revised, rough draft by the spring, and we're hoping to make that document public this summer for at least a month or two, and then have a public hearing hopefully sometime in August of this year, and that's very exciting. And I would encourage everybody in this room to read that document because that's really what lays out the guidelines for how we want the town to grow in the future. Hold fireworks on the Chester River with some help from local donors and the use of college property. Continue to pursue the concept of a 1.2 megawatt solar facility at the Chestertown wastewater treatment plant. Continue to monitor the closure of the hospital oil recovery program to protect the wellfields of the town of Chestertown. Continue participation in the region-wide effort to improve water quality in the Chester River through the Middle Chester Trust Fund and other grant opportunities. I can assure you that as mayor, that is something that I am very interested in, working with not just that fund, but also the Chester River Association and property owners to see if we can mitigate some of the stormwater that just gushes right into the Chester River anytime we have a major rain event. And I'm going off script a little bit here. Work with Washington College to explore creative ways to bring more students downtown to our commercial centers and to generally increase student participation in town activities. Work collaboratively with the waterfront revitalization task force to effectively present their findings, conclusions, and new concepts to the public. Update the town's website so that it is more visually appealing. Increase efforts to market Chestertown as a tourist destination through use of the website and other online mediums. Collaborate with other small towns such as Berlin, Frederick, and Ellicott City, Maryland, to name just a few, on their concepts that have worked for them to develop their local economies and implement some of those improvements here in Chestertown. And lastly, work with interested community members to conceive and implement additional winter events that will stimulate economic activity in Chestertown and make this a year-round tourist destination, specifically getting more people downtown to our commercial districts here in the historic district. So those are just a few of the goals, and there are others, but this are the major ones. All right, so that's the state of the town address. Shall we move on? So the next order of business on the agenda is to approve or actually review first the minutes of the mayor and council meeting of December 16th, 2013. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
Yeah, I do have, I don't know whether this is considered addition or correction or not, but on page four, I voted against the moving of the funds from one form to another. Actually, my vote was for no funds at all for that because I really feel like we're overplanning. We shouldn't be paying $25,000, and we don't even know what the waterfront group's going to come in with. So we might pay $25,000, and it'll fly in the face of what they're saying. So I don't think we should need that grant until after we hear from the group, the waterfront task force. So that's the reason for my vote, Jim. It wasn't a question of where the money was coming from. It all comes out of the town's income. So otherwise, I would move that we accept the minutes as so amended.
Is there a second?
Well, I was observing the meeting. I'll second. I was here, but I wasn't participating.
Okay.
Did you get the correction from Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
I haven't seen the file.
So there's a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the other order of business on this agenda item is to go over the summary of the executive session held by the mayor and council on December 16th, 2013, which was the last mayor and council meeting. So I will read the summary of that executive session. Mayor Bailey called executive session to order at 9:10 p.m., December 16th, 2013, to discuss a personal matter and a real estate matter. In attendance at the meeting were council members James Argato, Linda C. Kuiper, Mabel Mumford-Potts, and Maureen Stetson, along with W.S. Ingersoll, town manager, Chief Adrian Baker, and Jennifer Mulligan, stenographer. There were two motions made at the meeting. One, a motion made to hire a new officer, which passed unanimously. A motion was made to approve a contract for Chief Baker, which passed with four in favor and one opposed. The meeting adjourned at 9:25 p.m. Minutes were taken and are part of the record. So do we need to have comments on that?
Yep.
Do we need to have a motion to approve that?
No, it got approved.
Okay. Moving right along. The next item on the agenda is the payment of bills.
I'll move the payment of the bills as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're just flying through this.
They're trying to us for our first time.
Okay, the next item is the town manager's report, which will include evidently an update on the situation at Fresh and Green.
Fresh and Green, everybody asks this question. I've talked to the owner of Washington Square, one of the three owners, Dennis Silicato, for three different occasions, and he explained it pretty well. Fresh and Green is not a grocery business, it's a group of investors who have control of the property where Fresh and Green was until 2016. Fortunately, they're not grocers, so it's in their best interest to also fill the store with a grocery business. It's not like a super fresh leaving and making sure to pay the rent so no other competitors could move in. He is definitely hearing from the council, from residents who have written him with their suggestions, and I know that there were three entities that he was dealing with, and of course, he has to work with Fresh and Green to come to an agreement. He predicted that by March, they should be signing papers with one grocer or another. And I think your interest was to contact Mr. Silicato after you were sworn in, and I'm sure, I talked to his secretary on the phone the other day, he's coming back into the country today, would be happy to hear from you, for any suggestions, and really from the public through the mayor, or through me, or through the council, to the owners. They're very easy to deal with.
And I just wanted to say, a lot of people have stopped me on the street and said, hey, you really need a Whole Foods, you really need a Trader Joe's, or a Wegmans, and it's not really the way that it works there, but I appreciate all the suggestions, and what the town will do is absolutely make it known to the owners that we will do whatever we can within the guidelines to try to get a little store in there.
If you'd like to, I'll be carrying the way in.
Okay, that's great. I think Trish was, she's waving.
I would like to remind everybody that Chestertown Natural Foods is a grocery store that Chestertown already has on Cannon Street, and we are actually beginning our expansion plans. So we would like your support in that, and we are a locally owned business. We are invested in this community. We're not owned by a bunch of investment bankers. We have the town's best interest at heart at all times. But please come and talk to us, please come and visit us, let us know what you would like us to do that we're not doing now, what you would like us to expand into.
Absolutely.
She does. Appreciate that very much.
Glad you were here, a good place to get a plug in. This normally happens. We had an issue that the previous council said to take up with the new council, and I'll distribute this to you. South Fork Studio has a fountain park restoration plan for soil tree and turf restoration. I didn't have it out last time. I will copy it for the council. It seems like it's a lot, but it isn't. It's to do what needs to be done to the grass and turf and trees at the park. So Miles Barnard is terrific at what he does. Like I said, I'll distribute it to everybody, and you can consider it for the next meeting. There's really no off-season for the popularity of the things that happened in the fountain park, but to some extent, we have that now, and we need to get going on this, and so everyone can live together peacefully. The garden club and the vendors, and it's, you know, it's a beautiful park, and I think this is a needed thing.
He tells us what he's going to do for the...
Yes, it's a three-page document.
My objection the last time was, I don't want to vote for something I don't know what's going to happen.
And you hadn't seen it, and basically, I hadn't...
Have they modified the plans that they gave at the last presentation?
This is sort of like an arm of the garden club, it's not the garden club's fiscal plan. This is the plan for the land, and it's the one that Mr. Gatto and the council agreed was important to do, take care of the ground, and the other stuff will fall into place.
So this next meeting, we'll have it on the agenda.
I ask you to consider it next meeting.
And then can we have, you know, a timeline, so if we have to relocate anybody?
Oh, I don't think that was, obviously, he's got to work with those entities to make it work. So I don't think this is a plan to move people out. This is a plan to make a plan that we can live by for fertilizing...
A plan to make a plan.
Yes, and it will involve, like you say, scheduling and relocating temporarily. We don't really like plans to pay for plans, but there's nobody really like this gentleman. He is fastidious.
So just to clarify, this plan is more for the maintenance of the grounds, and is it different from their provision to kind of revamp the whole park?
Totally different. This is a plan within the plan. This is a proposal to create recommendations for soil, tree, and turf restoration at fountain park. Simple as that. That sounds simple, but it's not that easy when you have that much, you have those many things happening there, and I think...
But it's the plan, not actual work.
Well, his plan also supervises the work that gets done there, and that's pretty important, too. I should have given you all copies, but there was too much excitement in the air.
So you'll put it in our mailbox?
Yep, I'll send it PDF it and put it in your mailbox. That's really all I have.
Okay. That brings us to item number eight, the mayor's report. The first item on the mayor's report is to announce, this is big, Christmas decoration winner, 2013. So should I just get down the list of the award winners?
You have your own style.
Whatever. I've got room to run here.
Go crazy.
So I know you guys have all been waiting for this. The winners are as follows. In the first award, the first place winner, which gets just $50 in cash, is that right?
Yeah.
Fifty bucks?
Honorarium.
It's an honorarium, okay. The first place winner, who will receive a $50 honorarium from the town of Chestertown, are George and Carol Nelson, 210 Byford Drive. The second place winner, who will receive a $25 honorarium, are Frank and Barbara Kriegen at 213 Waldo Drive. The second award winners, $50, first place goes to Gail Register at 103 Cannon Street. The second place $25 prize goes to Elizabeth Watson at 223 Mount Vernon Avenue. The third award winner, $50, for Donna and Charles McNeil, 115 Trafford Drive. Second place, $25, Janet and Don Wilkerson of 620 High Street. And lastly, the fourth award winner at $50, William and Sheila Lepner of 201 Glenn Street. Second place, $25, to Francis Tomczeski, 105 Holly Avenue. And then the townwide daytime award, $25, goes to Chestertown Curb Appeal. Commercial plaques, the Imperial Hotel, and Chestertown Natural Foods.
There you see.
Congratulations. That was incredible. Well, great. Okay, the next two orders of business actually involve current vacancies on two of our commissions. The first one is our historic district commission has had a vacancy, a one-person vacancy, for quite a while. I know at the last meeting, Mayor Bailey wanted to appoint Ted Maris-Wolff, who, it's my understanding, it's the only resume that's been submitted for this opening. In my view, he is extremely well-qualified, in fact, I would say over-qualified. He is a PhD in U.S. history from the College of William and Mary. He currently is the interim director of the CB Star Center at Washington College. He's done archaeological work all throughout the state of Virginia. So I would like to nominate Ted Maris-Wolff to fill the existing vacancy on historic district commission.
Second.
I had a question last time. With all of the work that's going to be going on with the college, and he's the only nomination.
I see where you're coming from. I think most of the college's work on the waterfront and also at Stepney is actually outside of the historic district.
The armory and the board of education building.
Yes. The board of education building, as far as I know, has already gone through the HDC. At any rate, you're right, if that would happen, he would need to recuse himself, which is something that happens often on both the HDC and the planning commission.
I think anybody on any committee, one time or another, may have to reclusive himself for one reason or another, but unless you get somebody who lives in a complete bubble, then you're going to have some kind of a conflict of interest.
Well, college has a lot of...
We have to depend on their integrity to reclusive himself, and I think this guy's integrity is, you know, it's unperceivable, so.
So there is a second on the floor, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Ted will be joining the HDC. We also have had, now that Sam and myself are members of the mayor and council, we have obviously two vacancies on the Chestertown Planning Commission. It's pretty amazing, we have a lot of resumes, some great resumes, and I want to first, before I nominate the two people that I'd like to see on this commission, commend everybody that submitted a resume. Having been on the planning commission, it's a volunteer job, it can be a thankless job, it does require a fair amount of time and work, so hats off and kudos to everybody that submitted resumes. I believe we had seven or eight resumes?
Eight.
Eight resumes for these two spots, and this could have gone any number of directions. Two people that I would like, should I just nominate them one at a time?
I would.
The first person that I would like to nominate is Morgan Ellis. She has a very strong resume, a planning background, you know, has worked for the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy, was part of the charade involved in the Clark Farm. I think she's extremely well-qualified and would make a great commission member. So I'd like to nominate Morgan Ellis.
I second that nomination.
You...
I seconded the nomination.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The second person that I would like to nominate is Robert Forty, known also as Bob Forty. Same thing, he's just an upstanding citizen, a brilliant man, a very successful businessman, has a great real estate background, goes to planning and commercial real estate, is a member on a number of local boards, and so I'd like to nominate Bob Forty to fill the other vacancy.
Second.
You nominated him?
Pardon?
You seconded it?
I seconded, yeah. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay. Okay, so those positions are now filled, and hopefully... Okay, so those positions are now filled and hopefully get them out for the next meeting. I believe it's January 15?
Yes, I'll get everything out.
Okay. That brings us to our next agenda item, which are award reports. So Liz, you have a report for Ward One?
Not too much to say, having been the representative for a few minutes. I do want to say that it's a real honor to be here, that within the next two to three weeks, I'll be letting residents of the first ward know how they, how and when they can contact me. Meanwhile, over the holidays and this downtime, I've been doing a lot of reading and I'm just looking forward to working with everyone here for the next four years.
As are we. Okay, Ward Two?
Okay, I just want to remind everyone that the farmer's market is open through the winter and the dedicated farmers that were open for business Saturday morning in the 20-degree temperature and ice and snow were very dedicated people. And it would be really nice if, the temperatures are that low and there is ice and snow, if you can get out to purchase from them. They're not there for a hobby. They're there to make a living. And Sam, I'm going to give one to you. I have a complaint that the no parking this side of the street signs have not been replaced on the street, on Cannon Street between Kent and Col, Kent Street and College Avenue. And I have questions. Is the rail to trail unfinished, safe to walk on behind Foxley Manor?
No. And that's a double-edged sword that the state rail administration repaired the pipe that goes underneath and they stripped the banks and they don't, they haven't let us have that least portion of it yet. So not only is it not ours, it's not safe. That's why we're going to Phase Three to add more miles behind High Street because we don't even have control of that yet on the other side.
Well, can we put a sign up on the post?
That says don't?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I would like to see the MTA, their notion, and maybe it connects a little bit with this Lamont property thing that we're doing with the step pools, is they need to get in there and finish the outlet or whatever they're going to put in there so that, and I believe now that they've stripped all the trees off the sides, that it's fairly steep and we'll have to put some sort of fencing there.
But it's going over again.
Yeah, and it will.
We really need to put a sign there.
I know that people want to get on it. I've seen them walking over the rocks and stuff and they've even called an ass and I'd love to finish that one. That also has a crossing of 291 that I think would really improve the safety of the road itself. It's got kind of an island in the middle and I think it'll help the rescue squad. I think it'll help everybody that transits that area.
So the holdup is at the state level?
It's at the MTA level and that's the worst kind of holdup.
It's interesting though. I had somebody come up and say, "What do you put that log across there for? It makes it very hard for me to get back in." I said, "That's because you're not supposed to go back in."
I think they think because it's compacted enough to walk and on it and ride your bike on it.
And they took the rails up, which was really a great thing that happened. All the rails were up on all the rail trail areas.
Is there anything we can do to break the log jam at MTA?
I think so.
Would a letter from the mayor help?
I think that would probably be the best thing ever. Yes, of course.
Draft me on that.
First thing.
The thing we have to anticipate their excuse, which is they have to finish that project that goes underneath, so it's a sort of a two-pronged approach here.
There's no more excuses, Bill.
I'll tell them that. I've got just the name for you to call. George Fabula.
We're going to meet with all the department heads.
Yeah, yeah.
Next Wednesday. You're going to go too, aren't you?
I think I am, yes. Please send me an email with details.
All right. I'd also like to thank the Chestertown Garden Club and the Tree Committee for all of their work during 2013 and how pretty it looked in Fountain Park and around town. And that was due to the Chestertown Garden Club. Now, I'm going to bring up something. I would like to have budget meetings sometime soon. Everybody's tax assessment has gone out and I know that some people's assessment has, some, a very few have gone up. The majority have gone down. I was very pleased at mine. I would like to have some, start to have budget meetings and I would also like Pat to be able to get the figures, the projected revenue from the assessment office to see exactly what our revenues will be, you know, projected for at least the next two years because of the assessments that have gone down sizably.
Well, they project for a year.
I've already had people call me and ask me if the town is going to increase the tax rate because the assessments have gone down.
Like you said in the state of town address.
We answered that earlier.
Don't intend to.
The county did that.
Don't intend to.
That one time. We had public meetings all over the place because the assessments went down and the county tax rate went up, so we need to let people know. And that's all I have.
Well, I just want to echo...
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I just moved my papers. Can I finish?
Yep.
The contest, if I were mayor, the essay contest for 4th graders, do you take care of that or how do we do that?
I try to follow up if the MML doesn't get it to all the schools. I know Kent School participates. They've actually won it, but the Garnett School up here sometimes say they don't get it or they don't participate. The kids love it.
Nable.
Your kids can't go in.
Nable.
Yeah.
Do we need to do anything with Garnett?
First thing, find a decision. First makes it going to be a decision.
It's a no-brainer. All we need to know is when the MML sends the packets out and I'll go up and talk to principal myself.
Did you, did they come to visit the town?
No, that was the reason why I put it in your, into your mailbox, because I know that you had spoken to them and I thought that they were coming in so that we could do that at the same time.
They'll allow that to count for what the ultimate goal of that is, but for us, it's better to go to the schools and talk to the 4th graders and get them interested in this contest.
Okay, but did they come in to visit the town office yet?
Not yet.
No, we extended the invitation.
Yeah, okay.
But that's just one other way to become, what is the name of this, the city thing that this is part of? Fanner City. That's our end of it, but I think it's fun for, and I think it's fun for a mayor to tell kids.
I'd be happy to meet the principal.
To give them ideas that what they might be saying when they enter this contest.
Well, and there was a suggestion made this year too, that if we could get copies of the letters here in Chestertown.
Now, is this a statewide competition or is this...
This is through the Maryland Municipal League.
It is.
Yeah, all the municipalities, the schools and the municipalities participate. So, sorry.
Not a problem.
Always forgets something.
I just want to echo what Liz said earlier. It's just an honor to be here on the town council and I'm definitely looking forward to working in conjunction with everybody. I think we're going to make a fantastic team, so. And I'm excited to really get the ball rolling with the sidewalk on Flatland Road, what State Highway sent us. It certainly looks promising. There's definitely a lot of negotiating left to do though, so I'm certainly going to work tirelessly to make that come to fruition and I hope you have my back on this project here, so. And another thing that was mentioned in, you know, the goals for 2014 was, you know, increasing the marketability of Chestertown and, you know, that's certainly a project that I want to spearhead. There are a lot of really great, exciting ways that I think Chestertown can really capitalize on, you know, what the internet has to offer us. And, you know, the nice thing is a lot of these different strategies, like utilizing different social media platforms like Pinterest and accessing blogs, maybe even promoting ourselves a little bit more on different literary magazines like What's Up Eastern Shore. I think we can certainly make a huge impact and the overall cost is fairly low in terms of, you know, what we can expect in return. So I'm definitely looking forward to spearheading that and, you know, start drafting some things and, you know, put it in front of you guys and see what you have to say about that, so. Those are definitely two big projects that, you know, I certainly want to put my stamp on, so. That sounds great. I really hope you'll be a thorn in the State Highway Administration's side.
That's the plan. That's the plan.
Big concern where I really sidewalks or at least a trail or some way to get people down from this neighborhood safely, you know, especially with Gateway Park coming, is imperative.
Right.
And, you know, revamping the website is something that I campaigned on and something that, you know, I basically just want to get through this meeting, but that's something I think we need to do shortly, so I look forward to working with anybody that's interested in coming up with some creative ideas to improve our visibility online and also get the college more visibility on our website, which I think can help both their institution and the community.
Ward Four?
Then we're on to Ward Four.
Okay. The Roland Road, I've talked to Bill about this and I think we're in a general agreement, but I wanted to bring it before the council and let you know. The entrance to Roland Road to Bailey Park was mainly done for pedestrians, but we're having problems with people pulling back in and parking in it. Sometimes it gets more than one car, two or three cars, and that's actually a roadway so they can check the waterway. So we want to post that for no parking and just pedestrians only. I also would like, and I've talked to Bill about this, get a sign put up there that says no motorized vehicles on it. Last year I had, two times I caught people in dune buggies or whatever you call those little things they ride around on there and they used it for, I don't know if they were racing themselves, they were coming off when I saw them. And when I brought it to their attention, they said, "Well, it's not posted." And I said, "Well, I'm telling you, don't go on there." So that's something we need to do because they'll tear up the road and they'll tear up the turf because pretty soon they'll be doing doughnuts out in the middle of the turf. I submitted Tish Brown to take the vacancy that's on the police committee. Herb Friedman was supposed to do that job, but he's teaching a class on the exact same date and time that the committee decided that they want to meet and he can't teach the class. He teaches up at Washington College for Adult Education. Last meeting, Councilman Kiefer asked me about the Friends of the Dog Park. We have raised in-kind contributions and in money over $3,000 and most of it's went right back into the dog park. All of it will go into the dog park and I really think that that's kind of remarkable since the park's only been open for about six or seven months. People enjoy the park that much. I can honestly think that it's, say that I think it's used more than any other park we got. I go there at 7:00 in the morning and there'll be five, three or four cars there. I go there on a Saturday and there may be as many 10, 10 or 12 cars with dogs. So, and these people, and rightfully so, if they're using the park regularly, maybe they should contribute a little bit to its maintenance and to the amenities that we want to put in there, so. That's working well and it will continue to do and I think it'll go on forever. It's just, it's a way we can reach out. My thought was informing this thing is that the town can't go out and solicit funds. We take money out of their pockets with taxes. I don't think they're going to listen to us when we come to ask them, but we can do it as an individual entity, so that was done. Finally, I wish I had some great news. This is probably, I don't know how you all feel about this, but I've been working on, I brought it up at the, I was astounded to find out, there is no campaign finance reporting for offices for town. There are for the sheriff, there are for county commissioners, there are for any other state or federal fund, but not for the town. So I did some research and it can be done by an ordinance. Now, I'm not going to blind sign the council. I would have brought it tonight, but I put down some things that I think should be in campaign finance. I'm going to give you the list next time. We won't even discuss it next time. You take it home and see what you think of it. If you want to modify it, change it or so forth, and then we'll refine it into an ordinance. But I really think it needs to be something to be done. It could cause problems for us down the line if we don't do that and it's just, every other elected office has that, so we should have it here too, so. And that is Ward Four.
I have a question about the park. So the entrance that you're talking about is the one off Roland Road, which is kind of like basically a big driveway that kind of ends in gravel. If I can't park there, the only way that I can really get to that is to either walk from my house to there or park, go all, here's what I'm getting at. It would be nice, I understand what you're saying, like right now people kind of park in the dirt and it's a mess, but I think we really might want to take a look at making a nicer entrance to that park in that area because otherwise the only entrance is, if I'm an in-town person, the only way I can get to there is to go basically out of town and pull in from the backside.
Well, you could park on the roadway and walk in.
You could do that, but I mean, that is probably going to be irritating to those residents if a lot of people do that.
No more irritating than blocking that entrance. What has happened is you can't even tell it's an entrance sometime because the cars are parked in there.
Right.
And there's not very much room in there to, if you, they have to have that road for the, those guys are there on Saturday mornings at 7:00 and Sunday morning at 7:00 checking that generator or whatever else they do there. They need a free access in and out and if you start parking cars in there in the summertime, 6:00 is not unusual to see people down there, so. You know, you could always drive to Roland, drive out to Morgue Nick Road and come in the parking lot.
But you could also potentially actually make that a road that goes into the park with some sort of crosswalk over the walkway where you have a second parking lot that's on that end of the park for the people that live close to it.
Well, you know, I'm not sure you're familiar with the history of Roland Road Park, Bailey Park, but that great big fence was put up there because a lot of people in that area did not want to park.
I understand.
I don't quite, I never could understand why they didn't want to park, but we were actually overjoyed when we could put that hole in there and they didn't come in en masse and complain about it, so. I'm not sure that they'd go for a car through there, but if you think it could happen.
You'd definitely run into sort of the NIMBY situation, but I would bet that those residents probably now are the most frequent users of that park.
I think that's interesting. I think Bill and I kind of chuckled out of this. I had one come up and ask me, I've always said if I lived with that park, I'd put steps so I could jump over the, jump up. I had a lady come up and ask me, said, "At my own expense, can I put a gate in that park?" Because she lives next to it. And I thought, "You're singing an entirely different tune than when that park went in" because they were the ones who complained and I think Bill will tell you that.
I think we need to formalize at least the pedestrian entrance of it and I've talked to our masons and really the original plan, we didn't know that it'd be so successful so soon, but the plan was to have like a 10-foot trail into the park on that side with on-street parking. I mean, because it's really not, the other parking lot probably only holds 15 vehicles.
10 cars. And they're parking on the grass now because sometimes there's 12 and 14 cars there.
There's an overall plan that would cost millions and you're welcome to revisit it. It allows for more parking to be placed off of Shawba Road and I think your idea, when the community accepts it or you ask them about it, if they've changed their minds, that's fine.
How about Greenwood? Do we own that right away that goes through Greenwood? Do we or don't?
No.
No, we don't.
I don't think so. I think the owners on either side of it bought it years ago, but I'll check.
But the curb is still there?
It may still be an active right-of-way for us and I'll let you talk to Mr. Clark.
I mean, that would be a way that you could drive there and put a parking lot just on the other side or that whole area on the side could end up being a park, like it's a pretty popular park, but that would be a better interest than where you're going.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I just, I feel like we need to examine finding another way to get into that park that is clean and accessible for people so they don't have to basically drive out of town to get to the park.
You understand where Greenwood comes in?
Yes, yes.
Can I bring up one more thing while we're talking about changing the park?
Well, it's a, can we have...
Well, it's, can we have Bill Erwood, because I know he's got a lot of folks.
I just want to say one more thing before Billy says anything. There's four more acres there, there's, there's a remnant of what the hospital used to own. The last four acres is, is, if you go in Greenwood, that four acres there belongs to the hospital, and if this park is indeed that popular, we could control stormwater, we could have another entrance. If the neighborhood feels that way about it, we can do all these things and, and get that extra four acres, maybe, maybe by donation.
Okay, Billy, sorry.
I just wanted to offer that the recommission is already looking to address that park and has taken ideas from the community about adding other facilities to that, to that Roland Road side of the park, so that, that side of the park, if our plan is going to push it, it will have to become much more popular, and we'll need to facilitate better parking regulations to add to the volume. We've had a soccer group on the Poplar Football Group that would like to move their Wharton operation into Chestertown, and that's the most ideal location for it, so we ultimately need to facilitate that sort of traffic, and we're looking at, we'd very much like to have a meeting with the mayor and council and look at the possibility of that, and see if we're really ready to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're, we're on board with that, and that's, that's a massive piece of land that only, the Dog Park only takes up 30?
No, no, three acres out of 18. Six.
Yeah, so, yeah.
16 percent.
Yeah, we have a ton of extra space there that we'd like to expand the other, other facilities, other than just green space. And so, yeah, we would very much be interested in looking at other points of interest.
Because the Dog Park is really cool, but it'd be really nice to have some stuff there for humans, too.
Sounds, that sounds rehearsed. That sounds rehearsed.
No, I'd love to see a playground there. And when they were talking about playgrounds, I said, "What's wrong with our park, the baseball park?"
Well, I think, and I, I think it's important that before, like, all the neighbors here and watch this on TV, like, obviously, they're going to have concerns about noise, and so they would need, if, if and when we continue to grow that park, their concerns are going to need to be addressed, you know, as part of the process of planning, whether it's screening or what have you.
When I talk to people about that park, and especially my neighbors, I cite my, my daughter lived in New York City while she was going to law school. Every block that you live closer to a park, your rent went up $1,000 a month, until you, when you're facing the park, nobody in this town could afford to be on Central Park or wherever it would be. It just, it just gradually goes up because, and that's how valuable parks are. I, when they were talking about rails to trails, there are statistics that show, as soon as they put a rail to trail in, those people backing up to that property, their value of their property goes up.
That's right.
So that's a park in its sense.
Right.
So I, those people who might complain in my neighborhood should realize that their house is going to be worth more because we have a park. So I, I don't know whether that right-of-way still exists or not, Bill, but I think that would be a better entrance, actually.
Okay, I'll get checking through.
There was a, there was a person who was so opposed to the park at the time, that, that's a mental block right there, but, but that's where communication comes in, and changes in attitudes about the park.
Okay, well, thanks for your report, Marty, and that brings us to item number 10, which is, are there any questions or comments from the Peanut Gallery? Yes, Nancy?
On behalf of the Downtown Chestertown Association and all of its members, in the last four years are extensive, we would like to thank Margot Bailey for 20 years of dedication, and I know I've learned so in four years, the magnitude of 20 years.
Yeah, absolutely.
Keeping your spirit up and defending and helping and being positive and it's not a new job.
Absolutely.
I'd like to formally recognize Margot. And also, like, on behalf of the Downtown Chestertown Association, we welcome the members. We're all really looking forward to working closely with you, and certainly I'd like to, can't wait to get home with Nancy Butler, who's in Florida for the winter, and tell her that you recognize the Downtown Chestertown Association's curb appeal, which has been just physical hard work, and we're really excited about what's going to happen in the future. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I think one comment that was highlighted in Mayor Bailey's report, Rails to Trail, I am going to propose in the next five years that the county extend that rail all the way out to Wolf.
Oh, gee. Where were you 10 years ago?
I was at the campaign.
Well, I can tell you, you'll definitely have the support of the mayor. Anybody else? Okay, so the meeting...
No, 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 you have to ask for a motion.
I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn...
A motion to adjourn.
...this meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, guys.
All right.
Did you get a copy of this?
I have an envelope. I have an envelope from them and I haven't opened yet, I think you, was it in this?